Good afternoon, everyone. We'd like to call us on Orangeburg County Council Meeting of April 2nd, 2018, to order. And we're going to ask Councilman Johnny Ravenel to give us a motion. Thanks before we proceed, any further.
Let us bow head and roar the prayer. Father God, we would like you to allow us to come out to conduct some benefit to this county around this table that the investors, those people that we serve, can pray, man.
I hope that everyone of you have had the opportunity to read the minutes of previous meeting of March 19th. And if you have, I would entertain a motion of second that those minutes be received as written, or if there's any necessary correction, please note.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Moved by Mr. Cooper Smith and second by Mr. Willie Beards, that those minutes be received as written. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposeds, ayes have it, motions carried. Again, we'd like to welcome you to our meeting tonight. As always, at the beginning of our meetings, we have two areas of public comments. We have public comments of agenda items and also public comments of other matters. So now the floor is open for public comments of agenda items. If anyone have any comments that they'd like to address on agenda items, they may approach the podium.
First of all, for the record, my name is Joey Williamson, and I'm on the Orangeburg County Board Commission, but I want to be sure you know that I'm not here tonight to represent the board. And to be fair to other members, this is not something we've ever discussed. I know that the litter has been on your radar for a good while, but I want to share with you what's going on in some other places. I brought this up at one of the workshops, but in the country of Belize, they just put out a press release dated on March 20th. And they've given them practically a year to comply, but they're phasing out all use of styrofoam and plastic bags at the retail level. Just wanted to read what they're saying. It says, "Plastic shopping bags and styrofoam flan shells are being used by the average person for only a short period of time before they're thrown away, they end up in the landfill, or you end up on the side of the highway. Those are due to pick up trash. You kind of know what you see when you pick it up." They also attest to the fact that there are other alternative biodegradable products that can be used. They're already available in the marketplace. The annual cost of cleanup is considerable and is borne by volunteers, government, and civil scientific groups. And the municipal waste stream, plastic and styrofoam, across miles about 19% of the solid waste matter. And I'm just asking you to study the issue, to see if you can possibly prohibit the retail use. We have two German grocery stores in town. If you go in there and buy groceries, you won't get a plastic bag. They'll sell you a cloth for a dollar, but you won't get a plastic. Thank you.
I'm going to read the resolution. The resolution is, "The State of South Carolina, County of Orangeburg, a resolution sponsor, Johnny Wright Senior Chairman, Orangeburg County District 1. The resolution honoring Mr. Pastor James H. Lee and Community Prayer Life Center. And it says, "Whereas it is appropriate that the members of the governing body should recognize this religious institution and its congregation, who through their unflagging capacity for love, dedication of spirit, and faith in God, strive to enrich the lives of people in the community. Pastor James H. Lee, for its six-year of dedication service to God, their community, Council District 1."
Accept this resolution and do it to commend pastors and Christian leaders in our community, who do their best to advance the kingdom of our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ.
Moved by Mr. Willie Beards and second by Mr. Johnny Ravenel, that we pass the resolution honoring Pastor James H. Lee and the Community Prayer Life Center. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
All right. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Next is an audit and third reading, and this is an audit of the County Council of Orangeburg County, amending the zoning map of the unincorporated Orangeburg County to change the zoning designation for the real property described as tax map number 0317-00-006-005 from rural community to commercial general and providing for sellability and effective date.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, members of the council, the planning commission met on February 14th to discuss the request from the way of life covenant act of church to rezone the property located at 118 Bellwood, rural community to commercial general. The church wants to put additional sign, and this is the only category that will allow that. There was no opposition to the request and commission voting, now to approve the recommendation.
You've heard the summary from the deputy minister. Any question for him? If not, please give him a motion of second, third reading on this audit.
Mr. Chairman, I move for third reading on the audit.
This is an audit authorizing postponement of the 2018 reassessment of Orangeburg County properties. Mr. Maron, if you wanted to sum it for those who may not have been here for the last two reading.
Yes, sir. State of law mandates that each county be reassessed every five years. Prior to this law, county normally reassessed every eight to 10 years. The law required by the implementation gives county an option of taking a one-year delay. Therefore, we're requesting that the option to delay for one year give additional time to review and mail notices.
Third audit, item three is an audit, and this is the second reading on this audit, and it's an audit authorizing pursuant to Title 12, Chapter 44, Court of Law of South Carolina, as amended, the execution and delivery of a fee in lieu of avalouring taxes agreement by and between Orangeburg County and a project Oz as sponsor and one or more sponsor affiliates to provide for a fee in lieu of avalouring taxes incentive and certain special social revenue credit. The amendment of the existing amended and reinstated agreement for the development of a joint county industrial park by and between Orangeburg County and Dorchester County to enlarge the boundaries of the industrial park to include certain properties located in Orangeburg County and now ought to be here after owned and operated by the project Oz or one or more companies related there too. And third, the conveyance of certain properties to project Oz and other related matters.
Yes, sir. May the police counsel, the ordinance you have before you is seeking to approve a fee agreement as well as placement of this new project in multi-county industrial park. The prospect wishes to remain anonymous at this time. They have promised a minimal capital investment of $14.15 million. They estimated that building and improvements would have a $5.15 million investment, while machinery or equipment would be $9 million. They promised a minimum of four, uh, 47, excuse me, full-time new jobs. They're seeking a fee for a 30-year term with clawbacks and an SSRC. And the multi-county industrial park, they want to place this project in with the Dorchester, Orangeburg County Multi-County Industrial Park.
You've heard the explanation by the attorney and the question. If not, could I get a motion of second for third reading? I mean, second reading.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Moved by Mr. Johnny Ravenel, second by Mr. Beards. Second reading on this audit. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it. Motion's carried. Item four is an audit and first reading, and this audit is to address the internal distribution of revenue from certain property located in city limits of the city of Orangeburg to including a multi-county industrial park established by Orangeburg County and Dorchester County. Explanation on that, Mr.?
Yes, sir. May the police counsel, this ordinance is seeking to approve the internal distribution of fees that will be coming from Project 01 or the new Zeus expansion. Part of the project is in not only county limits but city limits. The ordinance requires not only county approval for the multi-county industrial park inclusion, but also that of city. The county and city want to define how the, number one, the mileage rate by in proration will be and how these funds will be distributed to the city as well as the county.
Question from the former attorney?
County has 370.1 mills and the city has 94. And so it would be prorated per that, Mr. Eric, or excuse me, Councilman Wimberly. Also, I should state that the prospect or Zeus is going to dictate where the improvements go. So where they actually go is going to actually impact how that fee is shared. I'm not saying this will happen, but if all the property was put in, you know, property that the county only owns, then of course, no, nothing would go to the city if it's all physically located. However, if it's spread out, that would dictate how it will be apportioned.
Mr. Chairman, I'm glad to see we prorated something, but something else I want to say about prorating. I think we need to look at an audience that every time we put sewer and water in the county and the city get all the money from it, they need to prorate some of that back to the county. We do a whole lot to enhance what DPU gets in terms of money. We need to talk about prorating some of that money back to this county.
Agreed.
Thank you for the comment, sir. Sir, is any other question on the county? Second that we...
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Beards, second by Mr. Beards, that we pass this audit as explained. To the city income, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Public hearing. I want this, in order to amend that certain amended and reinstated agreement for development of a joint county industrial park between Dorchester and Orangeburg County, so as to enlarge the park, Zeus Industrial Product, Inc., which was formerly Project 01. In order to establish the structured process for the permitting of an outdoor special event in the unincorporated area of the county, is it the first reading on this audit? And this audit is basically, I guess, Mr. Maron, you want to give a summary to the audience who were not here before, to kind of just summarize what it's all about, because we have a lot of, I've read all that things about what we have in all these special events and all that. But can you summarize it a little bit?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. This audit deals with the issue as it relates to special events. It is intended to ensure that the county, its residents, and visitors will have adequate and advance notice of a proposed special event in cooperation of its promoter sponsors and organizers in order to properly plan for the county services such as public safety, sanitation, and traffic control. Mr. Richard Hall and Billy Staley is here, who work closely on that, but with counsel. If you have any additional questions, special events, like the population that's supposed to find is 2,000, more than 2,000, that correct?
Right.
There would be an administrative fee of $50 for the actually special event per bill.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
We've had special events planned here in the county before, and it created a lot of problems. I'd like to hear from the people who plan these special events, what kind of special events are we planning? And then, and a little bit about the nature of the special events. Is that possible?
Well, I guess this is just the audit for that. I don't know if we have any special people here tonight specifically. This is not, this is not for a special...
It's not applicable to any special interest group.
Right. It's just for any, any interest group. Am I right, ma'am?
Yes.
Yeah, it's just for any, any group.
Any group in excess of 2,000.
Right, any group in excess of 2,000.
When we say special event, if there are possibility, if there's an event that may not fit Orangeburg County, that we may not entertain it.
Sir, the way, the way this special event ordinance is written, it requires them to come, or come to us and to go through a planning process for any event over 2,000 people, which would, which would bring DOT to the table, all the county's safety, safety agencies to the table, law enforcement, so forth, high control, to ensure that we don't have the traffic issues that we've had in the past with special events, and to make sure that that, that venue is properly planning and coordinating for that event. There's a process in the ordinance to where if it goes through, if it goes through those agencies, when it comes back to us to issue the permit, that we can require those agencies to, to respond in writing and say, "We, we agree with this." If they don't, then there's a process for us to deny a permit. At the same time, there's a process in the ordinance for the people, for the aid, for the venue to appeal to the county administrator.
I think you also, what I wanted to hear is, there could be an event that possibly may be turned down here.
Community.
It could be, yes, sir.
They choose to want to take it to another state to go to the ministry instead of to the special event committee.
Correct.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
A second.
Moved by Mr. Wimberly and second by Mr. Ravenel, that we pass first reading on this audit, permitting of outdoor special events. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it, motions carried. Item seven is a resolution, and item eight also is the first reading of the audit, so I'm going to take item seven and eight together. Item seven is a resolution, and it is a resolution by the planning commission to consider requests from Brendan Dennis Edmonds to rezone the property located at 2972 Slab Landing Road in Orangeburg, tax map number 0082-00-01-024, from forest agriculture to rural community district for the purpose of operating a boarding house. That's, that was the resolution, and of course, the audit is the same map number, same purpose. The difference is that you have three readings on the audit, and one on the resolution. And since it's pertaining to both of them, I'm just going to reel for explanation, and then we will ask for full.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, members of the council. Planning commission met March 14th to discuss the request from Brendan Dennis Edmonds to rezone the property at 2972 Slab Landing Road, Council District 3, from forest agriculture to rural community. The owners bought and renovated the house to run as a boarding house, and the zoning does not currently allow such use. The next-door neighbor came to the meeting to speak against this request citing safety concerns and an incident that had occurred already. The planning commission voted 3 to 2 to recommend approval to the request. It should be noted that similar use such as substance abuse facilities and adult and child daycare services are already permitted in this particular district.
Would you mind explaining to us kind of what?
So the owners bought a property, and currently they are working with the hospital and other agencies to have short-term boarding opportunities for veterans and people that just need somewhere to do rehab. It's kind of, it's a little bit of play on language, depending on what you call it or exactly how you run it. Some uses are permitted and some uses are not in that district. You know, you remember the waypoint facility. This is a smaller, you know, kind of set up, five or six people in the house at any one time. Just, it's basically a boarding home, short-term.
We call it rehab.
No, sir.
Not rehab?
No, sir. They, they are, we were told they were background, getting background checks, and the people from the hospital are doing the paperwork, and that's who they're working with to run the home.
I'm reluctant why they don't call it a rehab house, because that boarding house is kind of suspicious. Now, we've had some boarding houses on the upper part of the county. One of our councilmembers here now represents, and I didn't like the connotations of that, of that boarding house up there. And I don't like this one. It should be a rehab center.
Technically, they can't call it a rehab center because it's not a licensed facility. They don't do rehab. It's just a short-term boarding home for people.
Please get me back on their feet.
If we're under some agency, you know, so they can inspect it and check it frequently, it'd be fine.
The only agency that will inspect it frequently is the county fire district, who has already been to the house and inspected it. They do get an annual license from, I believe, DSS. It's just an annual permit. They don't do a lot of inspections, but the county fire marshal's already been to the site.
Moved by Mr. Wimberly, the district, and second by Mr. Cooper Smith, that we pass seven and eight. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it, motions carried. Item number nine and 10 is the same situation where it's related to each other. You have the resolution, and then you have the audit, so at the same map, tax map number, same designation. But the resolution reads, "A resolution by the planning commission to consider requests from Dana Atkinson to rezone the property located at 861 Cox Court, Orangeburg, map number 0140-00-05-009, and it's from rural residential, single-family district to rural community district for the purpose of a mobile home on this parcel." And of course, item 10 is the first reading of this third, of the three reading audits, pertaining to the same map number.
Mr. Chairman, the planning commission met March 14th to discuss the request from Dana Atkinson to rezone the property at 861 Cox Court, Council District 6, from residential, single-family to rural community. The owners wants to put a mobile home at this location. The area is predominantly mobile home already, and the staff recognize that this is an area that should be rezoned in the zoning ordinance update. There was no opposition to the request, and the commission voted to recommend the approval announcement.
Now, could I get a motion of second for nine and 10?
Mr. Chairman, I move the proof of this.
A second.
Moved by Mr. Willie Beards and second by Mr. Beards, that we pass nine and 10 for this district. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Item 11 is a resolution. And an audit. This one is a resolution by the planning commission. I think 11, 12 is, is related to each other, same situation. This is a plan, by the planning commission, a request from Edward J. Williams to rezone the property located at 2929 Bamburger Road, map number 0140-07-03-001, from forest agriculture to commercial general for the purpose of additional sign. And of course, that's the first reading of the audit, and it's pertaining to the same one, so I will not read that over again. So any questions on this one? If not, could I get a motion of second that we pass 11 and 12?
Moved the proof, Mr. Chairman.
Moved by Mr. Willie Beards and second by Mr. Johnny Ravenel, that we pass 11 and 12. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it, and motions carried. Item 14 is acceptance of the Lawrence of Vanna Reserve Fund loan, and I will yield to Deputy Minister for a brief on that.
Lawrence of Vanna Council Government have a revolving home program with its members, member counties. The funds were available to local businesses, the county. Orangeburg currently has $514,094 still in the program. The outstanding balance on the loan is $222,740. The existing loan will be paid by the funds held by LSCOG, which is the Lawrence of Vanna Council of Government. Will send a difference of $291,349 so that we can loan the money directly to businesses without having to go through catalyze.
Chairman, I move to reach out this money back to the county and that we get a full explanation on the payoff, as the weekly one is paying off, so we can get all that straight.
Moved by second. Moved by Mr. Wimberly, second by Mr. Ravenel or Mr. Beards, that we accept it and make sure that we get a full explanation of the revolving loan and what the payoff on other loans and where it comes from.
It's basically for small businesses that may not can get fully funded somewhere else. Then the county, through Lawrence of Vanna, can come in and assist them with a, with a partial loan. That's the right way to work, Mr. Cooper and Mr. Ravenel.
Has it been very beneficial?
And it benefits small businesses. And we've, we have, we have done this in the past, and we had a couple of them that we've done. They paid off the loans and paid them on time. We had a couple that went barely up on us. But anyway, it works for small businesses. That's basically what it was designed for.
Thank you.
All, all to have the move, moving second, so all in favor of the motion of acceptance, let me know by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed to it? Item 15 is an update from the Public Works Committee, and I yield to Chairperson, Mr. Johnny Ravenel, for that update.
Mr. Chairman, council, we had a discussion about air against the system in Oliver County. That's two heavy that goes across the county roads. We had taken action on that, but we are asking for explanation. Second item was an update on the one-time road maintenance offer on the Resalt Street. Doing a, a one-time trial and see how it works. And we're in the process of figuring out the cost on it. And we're in the process of, of the recommendation coming from the Public Works Committee. We definitely accept that we do do that subdivision off of Resalt Street, have a trial.
The Public Works Committee update, and also you've heard the motion for the item number two of the Public Works Committee meeting. All in favor of that motion and second, which was made by, motion by Mr. Ravenel, second by Mr. Cooper Smith. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it, motions carried. Yes, ma'am.
I hadn't planned to say anything, but Mr. Williamson gave me a reason to. This week is Countywide Cleanup Week in Orangeburg County. I have read or seen what Mr. Williamson spoke of. There are, we, this country has too many disposable items, and everybody is responsible. Therefore, these items are discarded once we can no longer use them. That goodness we are litter control department and concerned people who care about litter and our kind, who will voluntarily go around and pick it up. And it's really an environmental concern. I would want to go out and walk to, walk in litter if that comes up to my knees. So join in the cleanup this weekend and clean up where you live. Thank you very much.
You know, it's good that we have citizens in Oliver County who are willing to participate in a cleanup of Orangeburg County. What it'd have been good if citizens that littering doesn't put the trash down to start with. But most of all, we hope people don't litter, don't put it down to start with, and make Oliver County a cleaner place to live. Thank you.
I'm one of those who pick up litter on Delve Road consistently, because I don't intend to wait in that litter. And we need more people who are willing to pick it up, as well as those who are willing to protest to make sure that they put, they make the right materials, so we won't have that problem in our community. But I'd like to also thank the, the highway department on last week, week before that, they came and picked up a lot on Delve Road. Thanks for everyone who want to help and want to make a difference in litter control.
All right. Okay. Thank you all for your, for your input. Thank you for your cooperation, and thank you for your comments.
Well, I think the big emphasis tonight, a lot of, there was a lot of talk about litter tonight, and I think that's one thing. One citizen came in, and he was asking the county council to consider putting a moratorium on people using plastic and styrofoam in stoves and things of that nature. And then the others were talking about, this is National Litter Week, and that we urge people to go out and pick up their litter, but most of important, there was a lot of comment about the fact that we urge them not to throw it out to start off with, and then you wouldn't have to have as much to pick up. But we all need to understand that litter is a problem and that this is our community. And just like you keep your home clean, and you try to keep your yard clean, your cars and everything else, then you need to keep...
and everything else, then you need to keep your environment clean, and that's the significance of the National.
I would just like to echo the plea for everyone to get out this week. I've got my vest upstairs and my yellow bags to pick up litter. My husband and I will be out on the roads, and so I will be grateful for many people to join me this week.
Well, we covered a lot of material tonight, a lot of ordinances, from economic development to community development, fixing roads in the community. People need to pick up trash.
Being a concerned person, yeah, there is a lot of litter on the road these days, and a lot of people don't realize, once you throw out one cup, one cup deteriorates to two things, then you, all of a sudden, somebody throw a big bag out. So that's very important.
In other words, you're saying everybody needs to chip in and wherever they see?
Yes, everybody needs to chip in whenever they see litter on the road.
Well, the main thing that, that we had tonight was to bring a new ordinance to, a proposed ordinance to council for special events planning. We've had several incidents come through, and starting to see more development, and we want to make sure that the venues and the planners are doing what they need to do to keep the, keep their venue safe, keep our public safe, and, and not, not impact the citizens in a tremendous way.
The only thing I would say is that as you see this meeting, we would like to see you here. Don't wait until something's wrong. Come to the meeting, see what's happening, see what the council does to carry on the business of the county in the day-in and day-out area, and see what, what goes into running the county and making it the great place that it is.